Nineteen oh thirteen. Number five, Andrew D. Foster, eleven twenty-four. Streets and public improvements. It has been determined.
In addition to on our website for today's date. Based upon the fact that our meetings are now live streamed on Facebook.
Three hundred block of Lloyd Street. In the eleven hundred block of Walk Lane Street. In the two hundred block of Pendle Street. In the eleven hundred block of West Carla's Lane. Now, I know what I just read, and I didn't have a Carla's Lane on the top. So, let me go back. Thirteen hundred or the nineteen hundred block of West Seven Street is correct. Block of East Ninth Street is correct. Three hundred block of Lloyd Street is correct. Just want to say that those. Yes, Morgan?
Yes.
Wes?
Yes.
Jacobs?
Yeah.
Mayor Kirkland?
Yes.
Resolution, the council of the city of Chester does resolve that it does hereby accept a letter of adjustment for agreement zero six six three nine six B. Lloyd Street Bridge over Amtrak. M P M S five seven 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 three for the redistribution of costs in exhibit A A A with no change to the total project cost. Further, the proper city official is hereby authorized to execute the necessary documents for and on behalf of the city of Chester. Further, said agreement is contingent upon final review and approval of the city solicitor. So move.
I second.
Are there any questions? Madam Clerk.
Councilors Williams?
Yes.
Morgan?
Yes.
Wes?
Yes.
Jacobs?
Yes.
Mayor Kirkland?
Yes.
Resolution, the council of the city of Chester does resolve that it does hereby authorize the Department of Accounts and Finance to refund the stated amounts which represent a refund for the overpayment of two thousand nineteen slash twenty twenty real estate taxes as follows. City of Chester, eleven twenty-one Powder Street, Chester, PA, nineteen oh thirteen, in the amount of a hundred and forty-four dollars and twenty-three cent. And Edward Nelson, at eleven twenty-one Powder Street, Chester, PA, nineteen oh thirteen, in the amount of three hundred and nine dollars and seventy-one cents. So move.
I second.
Are there any questions? Madam Clerk.
Councilors Williams?
Yes.
Morgan?
Yes.
Wes?
Yes.
Jacobs?
Yes.
Mayor Kirkland?
Yes.
Resolution, the council of the city of Chester does resolve that it does approve an order payment of a series of bills and refunds as prepared by the Department of Accounts and Finance and is shown on expenditure approval list dated September fourteenth, twenty twenty, attached hereto and made apart herof, subject to approval from the Department of Accounts and Finance. So move.
I second.
Are there any questions? Madam Clerk.
Councilors Williams?
Yes.
Morgan?
Yes.
Wes?
Yes.
Jacobs?
Yes.
Mayor Kirkland?
Yes. Thank you, Madam Clerk.
You're welcome.
At this time, we will have a presentation for our twenty twenty-one memo.
If I take my mask down here. I'd like to say good morning to the mayor and council. I'm here to, um, to read the, um, the municipal obligation for twenty twenty-one, and I have to read it in front of the governing body of the city. Our first one is the fire pension plan. Yeah, I think it is.
You want to sit over here, Mr. Peter?
Okay.
Welcome you all here to the official roast of Commissioner Otis Blair. Commissioner, all these persons you see here today are here to, um, see who can get in their best dig at you on this day. Yeah, 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 yeah. They gladly showed up when we told them we were roasting you today. Um, let me just say this, we're, we're here, uh, and it's going to be part of, partially a roast, you know that. But we're here to recognize, uh, the service, the twenty-seven years of service, dedicated service, committed service, professional service provided by Commissioner Otis Blair. I'm going to hold my comments till later, but I just want to say I appreciate the professionalism that he has exhibited, not only as commissioner, but as a person who protects and serves. Today, we're here, uh, to officially give him a proper, uh, retirement send-off. And so I, I do want to recognize some officers, uh, some colleagues, current and present, or past, to step to the mic before, uh, the deputy roasts him. So we, 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 I know, I know, uh, Chief Nolan has something to say. And so we would ask that you take this time to, uh, admonish him. Yeah, you might have to sit down for this.
For those who don't know me, my name's Jim Nolan. I spent twenty-four years as a police officer here in the city of Chester. I ended my career at the beginning of this year when the district attorney asked me to come be the chief of the investigative division for the county. And at that time, Otis Blair was my partner in service to the city. I was the chief of police and he was the commissioner, and we had an interesting way of running things. But since that ended, I've often said, where's Otis? And it reminded me that throughout my whole career, I've said and heard this, where's Otis? And inevitably, whenever you would hear this, where's Otis, something would follow. Whatever it was. And you hear him on the radio, and you go, where is he? And you go driving around his beat, and you'd find his car door open. And he'd be chasing some poor soul around who was involved in some criminal activity. And inevitably, this would happen day after day after day. Where's Otis? Where's Otis? And there was Otis, some poor person involved in criminal activity who was caught by Otis. Now, one time, we go, we're on a hunt, where's Otis? Where's Otis? We're running, and he's out, duh-duh-duh-duh, on the radio. And we're out looking for him, and there's a fella handcuffed to a pole. We run up and said, where's Otis? He said, ah, he cuffed me and went after the other guy. He comes back with another guy. I mean, this is the kind of thing he did all the time. And those of us who ended up in management with Otis would often say, where's Otis? We'd be at a budget meeting or some other boring thing that managers have to do, and they'd say, where's Otis? And inevitably, you'd hear on the radio, twenty-four oh one is out, duh-duh-duh-duh, whatever, whatever crime he was attacking. But what I see now, and thi- this day, brings us to one thing in the Chester Police Department that hasn't happened in the better part of three decades. Tomorrow, somebody's going to say, where's Otis? And the answer will be, I don't know. I don't know, what are you going to do, brother? I'd love to know. But thank you, it was a pleasure working with you. You were a great cop, good man, I appreciate it every day. Thank you very much for your service.
Also, I want to recognize the presence of DA Jack Stolzheimer. And you're more than welcome, please, Mr. DA.
Negative, we're roasting to say about Otis Blair because he is one of the best individuals I've ever met in public service. And there's a lot of great people here today. Chief Nolan, I have huge respect for. Commissioner Gretzky is here. David Sblane, the chief of Nether Providence. Joe Daley, the chief of Springfield. You're seeing the best in the practice of Delaware County law enforcement all around this room. And I am outranked by the U.S. Marshal for the Eastern District of Pennsylvania, Eric Gardner, who is here to pay his respects for everything Otis has done for this city. I think Otis not only is a cop's cop, but he has been a voice for the community as well. I've never seen anybody who cares more about the job he's done than Otis Blair has done as a police officer here and as a leader of your department here in Chester. We're going to miss working with you, Commissioner, but we know we've got some great people stepping up. We love working with the Chester Police Department. We know that the challenges that we have, that we face together. But we are all committed to working together collaboratively, with or without Otis, uh, to make this the kind of community we all know it to be, uh, and to keep everybody safe in, in doing that. So I want to thank you, Mr. Mayor, for everything you're doing. Council for, for inviting us here today. Uh, and Otis, I hope you have a great retirement because you've earned it. Thank you, sir.
Thank you.
Marshal Gardner, please.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. Actually, I have one where's Otis story. And actually, it followed, uh, Otis took me by my old house on the east end because I, I started as a little kid on East Twentieth Street. And we actually went to visit one of our old neighbors, uh, the father of Nikes Davis, who was tragically killed in your great city. And where I'm getting at is, yes, where's Otis? He knows the city like the back of his hand. This family sacrifices that he's made are telling. And despite those tragedies, the care that he had, the care that I saw visiting with, with Nikes' father, okay, the care taking around the city, the care that he took to bring the Marshal Service back to your city to help, to support your department, uh, in making the city vibrant and great. It's on this man. I've never met a finer, more world-class individual, person, and friend than Otis. I'm sorry to see you go, I know you've left your department in great hands. And on behalf of the United States Marshal Service, our very, very best for a well-earned and well-deserved retirement. Thank you, sir.
Good morning.
Good morning.
First and foremost, as many of you know Otis Blair, he started his career July sixth of nineteen ninety-three. He dedicated twenty-seven long, hard years to the city of Chester and to this police department. What I could tell you about Otis is, is that he gave it his all. No matter if it was a holiday, no matter what day it was, what time it was, he was out there. Uh, he went through the ranks of patrol officer. His biggest niche, I thought, in my opinion, was, was his narcotics. He was an expert in narcotics. He has the heart of a lion. His carriage goes to, to the boon and back. And what I want to say is to a friend, a leader, and a mentor, and as I will use your words, a true hard charger, you will be missed.
Good morning. Um, I come before you to simply, uh, to read a poem about retirement. We have spoken about retirement, he, he doesn't know what he's supposed to do.
The beach.
So, uh, time goes by fast, it's hard to believe. It's time for your retirement, time for feelings free. You work so very hard to make this dream come true, and no one deserves it any more than you. You have had some rough times, you've made it through them all. You made the best of the whole life, and you made the best of what life brings, and today you're standing tall. I wish you days of happiness, not filled with any strife. I hope that your retirement years are the best years of your life. Retire, old woman.
And I know you're sitting down, and you don't want me to give you orders, but front and center. So what we have here is presented to Commissioner Otis Blair in recognition of your twenty-seven years of dedication to his service, presented by the officers and the member of the city of Chester Police Department, July sixth ninety-three to September first, twenty twenty. And we actually got your last, uh, badge that you wanted me to buy from you because you thought it was for something else. Presented to you.
Bring him right here. Bring him right here.
Somebody's dodged and stepped or is out front, the bus can't get by? No? He said, somebody got their car off. Okay.
You've shown nothing but professionalism, dedication, and commitment to this city, to this council, and to your colleagues. And we appreciate all the heartfelt, um, love, real love, that you've dedicated to this community down through the years. And so, I tried to get the keys to the Cadillac, but the dealership wasn't open, so you have to settle for the keys to the city. And this says, Chester City Council presents the key to the city of Chester to Commissioner Otis Blair in appreciation and recognition of your twenty-seven years of dedicated service to the city of Chester as a law enforcement official. September, twenty twenty. I'm surprised I was able to read that without my glasses. Let me say this, you're not only a commission.
First of all, I want to say thank you, Mayor, City Council. I want to say thank you to my colleagues on every level. It's bittersweet. Last night, I was watching TV and, uh, on the ID channel. It was about, it was about, uh, Corporal slash Detective Mike Beverly. The reason I'm here today is because of Corporal Mike Beverly. He talked me into coming to Chester. My brother's dog had bit me and, uh, put me in the hospital. And, uh, Corporal Beverly came to take the report. And we knew each other, we weren't close, but we knew each other through school. And he's like, you might as well come to Chester. And I'll be honest, I was waiting for a call with the Maryland State Police or North Carolina State Police. I was going through the process with them. And, uh, he convinced me, he's like, well, look, you already have your certification. Go ahead and, uh, you know, apply, see what happens. And if you get that call, go ahead and go. Well, I did that, I applied. Unfortunately, my first day on the job was Officer Connie Hawkins' funeral. And I remember standing in the middle of Tillman Street, directing traffic for her, uh, her funeral. And they gave me a badge and they gave me a gun. I said, go out there, do what you do. And I remember looking around, and I said, this city needs me. And I worked and I swore that I was going to give it a hundred and ten percent every day, no matter what. And I did, I tried my best. And twenty-seven years flew by. I'm not even going to lie. I've had the pleasure of working with some of the finest police officers, men and women in the country who give everything they have with what little they have. For the most part, they don't complain. They come to work and they do a thankless job. And I want them to know that I would go through the door with any of them anytime. I can't say thank you enough to the mayor and city council because at the end of the day, you know, you guys gave me this opportunity. And I know we had our disagreements, but I want you to know from the bottom of my heart that whatever decision I made, I made with everyone's best interest, even when it wasn't popular. Because you can always surround yourself with a bunch of yes men. But a true friend, whether you realize it or not, is the one that's going to tell you when it's wrong and why it's wrong. And, and not to say it's wrong. Mayor, I want to thank you personally because you came to me a number of years ago when I was standing out there, and you talked to me and you asked me what was going on. That had never been done, you know? You gave me a fair shot, and that's all I could ever ask for. So, I'm going to wrap it up because I can go on and on. There's plenty of examples, Mr. Reese. I want to personally thank you from the bottom of my heart for being there. You could have rolled off into the sunset years ago, but this young lady works tirelessly every day. You can't ask for a better person, you know? All of you, thank you. I want to thank those who are here. Anita, I want to thank, thank you. I learned a lot from you. There were times when I was hot-headed and you calmed me down. But, uh, I just want to say thank you. If I had to do it again, I would do it again. Deputy? I hope part of things are coming your way. I know that the, the body will give him all the support and love that you showed me. Mr. DA, I forgive you for what you did. You did bring him back, I appreciate that. You know, uh, so, I'm going to keep it short, I'm going to end it here. But, um, I want to say thank you for everybody, to everybody. It's been a hell of a ride. And there's some challenges that have to be met, and there's some challenges that we don't know about yet, and, uh, it's trying times. But keep the faith. Stay safe, go home. I don't have to look at my phone anymore when it rings. Well, that's not mine, it's right there anyway. But, uh, I just want to say thank you, everybody. And you'd also know that if I'd have known all this, I wouldn't have came. Okay, but, uh, I want to say thank you for everything, and thank you to those that are here and not here. And say a prayer for those that we lost. That was my biggest fear at working, you know? When my phone would go off, I would see certain numbers and, uh, I would get butterflies. Because at the end of the day, no matter what, I always wanted everybody to go home, whether it be a cop or civilian. I wanted everybody to go home from every encounter. And I always let, I always say to people, Chester police perform miracles every day. And the reason I say that is because there are some shortcomings. And the reason I say that is because there are some shortcomings, but at the end of the day, they don't complain and they do what they need to do. It makes the residents of this city safe as humanly possible. Amen.
Amen. Does this mean no more wedgies? Oh, yeah, you and that's me and you got it. Also, also, I'd be remiss if I didn't recognize the presence of our very own, the Honorable Judge Walden Davis is present here with us today, recognizing the and Fire Commissioner Rigby is present with us today as well. In other words, in other words, you brought out the big hitters there, Commissioner. Once again, from the bottom of our heart, I mean, counsel wants to, I know Al Jacob has something to say.
Mayor, I just want to, Commissioner Blair, and I think you know this, I was one that advocated, and so I don't want nobody to be throwing no slings at me, advocated for you to get a top cop job in the city of Chester. I'm not, you know, there might have been some other people too, but I just want to say one thing, two things. When Nolan got up and talked about how he was always, and this didn't come from Commissioner Blair, he and I used to use the same bar at Ninth and Penon?
You said Bar or Bar?
Well, Bar too, sleepy Joe. Ethan what? Ethan Potter. And I went in there one day and the barber told me that Commissioner Blair was, he was cutting his hair, had the apron on him and everything, and outside with a warrant, and he recognized it. And called him, another story I want to tell, when, and you mentioned this too, somebody did that narcotics, and I was practicing law then, had a trial, jury trial, and won the case. And talked to him later on and he told me, you wouldn't have won if I had, the DA chose not to put you on the witness stand. He said, you wouldn't have won if I had taken the stand. So, Commissioner Blair, too, I don't, you know, a lot of people in here, I don't know what your hobby is. I mean, fishing, golfing, I don't know what this guy does. Well, y'all keep that in mind, Commissioner Blair, God bless you and enjoy, enjoy your retirement. And the city of Chester appreciates all that you've done. Thank you.
Mayor? Jeff? Go ahead, go ahead, Councilman.
I just want to let everybody know, you probably came up and saw that the tents and all of that stuff out there. Well, that's the COVID testing, it's real convenient. We all got it, it's not that painful. As of September twenty-first, they've been out there. They've tested six hundred and five people in the city of Chester. We've had twenty-six positive. And I think the last testing date, maybe you're gonna have to double.
October second.
The last testing, the last testing date is October the seventh, so I would just, October second. My country accent, that's what I say. Y'all want to pronounce it like you all? October the second. No, but, so anyway, I just encourage everybody, people who are here and people in the city of Chester, it's a convenient thing, we know how important that is, please get tested. Thank you.
Thank you, Councilman.
Councilman, can I add something else?
Yes.
They added an additional date for weekends. We know that sometimes it's hard for people to come in on a weekday. So this Saturday, they will also be doing testing, nine to four.
Thank you. Thank you. Without any further ado, please.
Well, it's important anyway, but just the twenty twenty census. Again, I believe this is the last week to sign yourself and your family up for the twenty twenty census. Everyone counts, it's very, very important. Councilwoman Williams has been out in the forefront as long as, as well as Councilwoman West and all of us. I think we have something coming up this weekend as well. We'll be in more neighborhoods, making sure that we're knocking on doors, trying to get everyone to sign up or to get all of their family or relatives accounted for, accounted for. So, the twenty twenty census, this is the last week to do it. Please, please do not forget to fill it out, thank you.
Excuse me, can I please have a word? May I? I'm a resident, I know this is something else, but I
Yes, ma'am.
Have been living in Chester for fifteen years, and I just have a fifteen-year problem. I live on two oh sixteen
Could you come forward and state your name and address, please?
My name is Rosamie Johnson. I live at two oh six East Twenty-second Street. Thirty days after I bought my house, my neighbor moved out and that house had been abandoned for fifteen years. I have a problem with high grass, like their yards has become a jungle. Their front yard has become a jungle and every year I battle. Now I have a sinkhole in the back of my alley that getting creepier, closer and closer to my home. I came here, this is my first time in one month, and I feel like I get nowhere with this. But in the meantime, that sinkhole is huge, I have to picture. And their house, I've been having problems nonstop from the roof leaking into the water coming into my home because someone went in there and cut the pipe. I mean, you name it. And now I have a rodent problem because it's a jungle back there. Like, I have literally re-wrecking the sidewalk myself in front of their house because I can't even step out of the car without the glasses like this high to my knees. I keep coming here, but at the same time, I feel like my voice is not being heard. Like, what do I have to do for something to be done with that two oh four East Twenty-second Street?
Say your name again, I'm sorry.
Rosamie Johnson.
Ms. Johnson, who, who did you speak with?
I spoke to, you guys have too many mics. I spoke to Mr. Mike, like, three weeks ago, he took my name down. He said he gonna go out and check the property, whatever. That didn't happen because nothing been done. Today, I speak with Michael Doc
Drone?
Yes. And he took my name and I'm down again. So he said he gonna go inspect the, inspection the plate, the sinkhole. But as far as that house, I keep calling, I get no answers, I get no call back. So I left the issue and concern with the lady up front. But like I say, this is fifteen-year-old problem. Like, how long are we allowed the resident, or, I mean, people that don't live here, leave their property abandoned and not taking care of their property?
Ms. Johnson, can I, what must I address over to your panel?
Two oh four East Twenty-second Street.
Okay, so how we doing, we're asking in my department. And so, we have somebody, matter of fact, we have people in here right now listening to us. Somebody be out.
What about that? The sinkhole is
I'm Councilwoman West of the Streets and Public Improvement. So, Mr. Rodney Robertson, who's my Public Works Director, he'll look at the sinkhole and that's located to behind
Two oh four, I mean, I'm sorry, two oh six, the sinkhole right in my backyard, two oh six East
It's in your backyard?
No.
Oh, behind your
Yeah, if, you can tell that someone cut the square, I think it was a company because you can look and see their pipe. And they wasn't, I guess the patching process might not be done correctly. So now I have a hole like this, this big.
Okay, I'm sorry for your inconvenience. And I'll make sure that as far as the sinkhole is concerned, my department will check that. Mr. Rodney Robertson, can you make sure that we get your phone number?
Sure. What about the backyard of two oh four?
Again, that's
All right. Thank you. All right, thank you for hearing me out, thanks a lot.
Make sure we get your phone number.
Okay.
Thank you. Please, join us as we celebrate the retirement of Commissioner Otis Blair. As you step outside, you'll see an elaborate, an elaborate undertaking. So please, join us, all of you, each and every one of you, and get something to eat.
And Mayor, they need to stop at the COVID station first.
Yeah, how about that? Oh, we got one right out here? All right. Here ain't a saying no other business.